If you'd all please stand with me and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is concerned. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you. We've got some ceremonies, proclamations and presentations. The first one's a proclamation, and I'm going to read it out. It's Historic Preservation Month. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing sustainability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by the dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas celebrating America's treasures is a theme for National Preservation Month 2011 sponsored by the City of Oregon City and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, now I therefore, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim, "May 2011, National Preservation Month," and call upon the people of the city to join their fellow citizens across the United States recognizing and participating in this special observance." And being such, we're going to recognize recent people and things that are going on in our city. Christina is going to take and make issues of proclamation awards to both a piece of property and also an individual.
Thank you, Mayor Neely. I apologize for losing my voice, so hang on with me. The Ruth McBride Powers Award is given out every year to recognize historic preservation people and places in Oregon City. And if you have the back of the award, if you have on your diocese, people, there's some great history of Ruth and kind of the amazing things she did, not only in Oregon City, but in Oregon, and the houses that she saved that were territorial age, such as the Irma Tinger House, the Rose Farm, the Matthew McCarver House, the Ainsworth House, and her testament to taking these, what was then 100-year-old and 120-year-old homes, and now 150, 160-year-olds homes, and seeing the value that they have. The Historic Review Board created this award, I believe, in 2007 or 2008, and it's been really fun each year during Preservation Month to award people that are kind of living out that spirit. This year, we have two awards. One is to Ben James Investment for their project at 1209 Seventh Street, and this was chosen as a recognition for compatible infill and the reuse of existing buildings in the McLaughlin Conservation District. And there's a really great quote from the National Trust I wanted to read. "Preserving and repurposing our buildings is one of the greenest things a community can do. Continued use of our existing buildings reduces the amount of demolition and construction waste deposited in landfills, lessens unnecessary demand for energy and other natural resources, and conserves embodied energy, which is the amount of energy which originally was expended to create the structures." And I think this is just a great example of taking what people thought wasn't eyesore on Seventh Street and turn it into a really contributing building. And I have some before and after pictures, which is always fun to remind people what it did look like. And so this is that quote again. So remember, this is what it looked like.
Yes, that's right.
And this was actually quite an older building that had gone through a fire, and people decided to resolve it by putting metal siding over it, showing what it looked like, Seventh Street with a barrel roof. This is looking up the ever-so-beautiful parking lot. And now, this is what we have, which is really neat, just showing some views.
Looks great.
And a much prettier back location. So I'd like to bring Ben James up and Vicki Yates from our Historic Review Board. All right, this one was really a fun project, because kind of Ben came to us and said, "I'm buying this building, but I don't know what to do," and it was a really collaborative effort. And so I think everyone kind of came away with this project really proud of what the final result was. Our second award this evening is a service award to thank Todd Island for his years and years on the Historic Review Board and the valuable guidance he's given. And I have a great quote from Vicki Yates I'd like to read. "Having Todd's architectural experience on the board was invaluable. With his understanding of historic architecture and preservation, and ability to grasp both the big picture and intricate details of design, he really helped the board make better decisions. Todd will be difficult to replace, and he definitely will." And for anybody listening, we do have the architect's position open. And you do not have to live in the City of Oregon City. You can live outside the city limits. So we look forward to anybody who would want to put their passion for preservation and happens to be an architect to use on the board. So if Todd wants to.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
And I also want to announce that the next City Commission meeting, I'll do a small presentation about the benefits of historic windows and repairing windows, and how that relates to energy efficiency, and how oftentimes keeping your historic wood windows is often the most energy-efficient option. And so you'll be getting a little presentation from me and as part of our Preservation Month activities at the next City Commission meeting, so you can't get rid of me. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Powers did a great service to our area by procuring houses that would have otherwise been demolished. But our funds were not limited, and many of those houses actually needed some great loving care. The city took on the Irma Tinger House, and we have to find ways to-
We're sorry, Ruth.
We're sorry, Ruth, but we're going to do that right. We're going to do that right. But we've actually had individuals that have stepped up, procured those properties, and actually restored them. And one that was in a sad state, an extremely sad state, was the Ainsworth House. The Ainsworth House was the house that was Captain Ainsworth's house. He was the steamship driver for the Lot Whitcomb. It was the first, I understand, the first steam ferry, steamboat that operated on the Lower Willamette and Columbia River. And eventually, I think, did work in California, too. But it was built in Milwaukee. And that particular industry that started off with the building of that particular steamship is actually what led to the creation of Milwaukee as a city. We also had such a place on Kanema, but after, it didn't fare quite as well in terms of industrial development. We still had that community present with us, and both of them were major historic sites in this time. But in any case, the Ainsworth House was in very, very, very sad shape. And a person, people by the name of Tom and Claire Mett and their mother procured that property and restored it. And I wanted to give special recognition to Claire Mett, if she would come forward. Anyway, I'm going to read what we have here. Some of it, I think, I wrote. But anyway, "In recognition of you and your mother, Carol Wood, and members of your family for restoring the Ainsworth House, built in 1851 by and resided in by John Ainsworth, captain of the Lot Whitcomb, the first steamship built on the Willamette River by Lot Whitcomb," that was a person, "in Milwaukee, Oregon, which became the major steamship building site for the former, for the Lower Willamette and Columbia Rivers. In witness thereof, I have here unto, I'm not good at these words, here unto, at my hand with a pen, an official, and this third day, May 2011, sign this. In recognition of the tremendous work that you and your family did, and your mother in terms of helping out in the procurement of that house," I got two tours of that, a before and after tour. And it was really in very, very bad shape, lots of dry rot and so forth, and I scratched my head and wondered what you were getting into. And as you got into, you were probably wondering what you got into. You did a tremendous job, and you've had a community built around it. I think it's called Ainsworth Estates, or something of that nature. There was some effort to build those houses in a way that didn't conflict with the architecture of the Ainsworth House. And it's a nice community, it's a great house, and I really appreciate what you and your family did. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
We'll start off with citizens' comments. This allows citizens up to three minutes to speak on any topic that they really want to. As a general practice, we do not have any discussions after you've made your comments unless there's some clarifying thing that comes up. And anybody who wants to make comments, we should go ahead and sign the card and pass it to our, in this case, I guess, your assistant to the city recorder, Kelly, how do you spell your name? Burgoyne?
Burgoyne.
Burgoyne. And our city recorder couldn't be here. Up to three minutes, all you have to state in terms of your introduction is whether you're from Oregon City or from outside of Oregon City. And I see one person signed up, and that's Dan Fowler.
What a great night to be here. Historic preservation is where I began, in public service in Oregon City. And I was just walking down memory lane. Oh, Dan Fowler, Oregon City.
Shame on you.
I had the privilege of working with Ruth McBride Powers, and I can remember my three daughters and Patty and I going over to her home and visiting her, and them being able to play in her home and look at all the hundreds of thousands of dollars of cut blue glass that we said, "Don't touch." Just a wonderful lady, just a really wonderful lady. And I had a little bit of encouragement with Claire on the Ainsworth House, but I'm not going to talk about that either. Anyway, tonight, I really do have a concern that I want to bring before the commission, and it concerns blue heron and the potential of demolition prior to a master plan or a developer selected. And I have been following the issue as close as you can as a public person. And my concern is this: The trustee may be tempted to, in the expedition of trying to get revenues from that site, to move forward with demolition permits prior to master plan. I think we need, that would be a mistake in my mind, because we will not have a mill district or a mill site, even in a redeveloped format, without a mill. And the mill is more than the four or five wonderful brick structures down there and the wonderful foundation work, and I hope that those stay and can be restored. But the mill has a feel to it. The mill is metal, the mill is structures, the mill is equipment, and those, I believe, in the long run, have more value and more significance as a piece of a redevelopment project than they do a scrap. So my encouragement to the commission, and if they so are inclined to direct staff or to the planning department, is to look and see if there is a way that we can be inserted into the process. I'm not saying that there aren't pieces of that mill that should be demoed. But you can do the right thing at the wrong time, and it's going to be really wrong. The other concern I have is just in the redevelopment of the site. Once you take all those metal structures down and those buildings down and technically remove those, I'm not so sure you have the same ability to replace those because you're within 200 feet of the water. That's a technical water resource issue, but I think for those two reasons alone, there should be not too much haste given to demolition. So I think it's a significant issue for the future of that area and the future for our city, and I would hope the commission agrees in order to advance that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we probably do have agreement. I guess we might take a moment to see if our city manager or our city attorney have any comments.
Well, I hate to say that Mr. Fowler's reading our minds, but I guess he is.
Well, you might have been reading his.
Well, we've actually, when I say we, the City Commission and I and our attorneys have actually been, we're in the process, we're in the litigation in the bankruptcy court. There are a lot of limits, obviously, when it comes to disposing. The bankruptcy court's preeminent view is to liquidate the assets and get the most for the creditors, and primarily, in this case, the secured creditor. We're one of the unsecured creditors unless you consider a deposit in our utility office to be secured. But aside from the utilities, we're looking at a host of other issues that affect the public interest on the site. And I'm not at liberty to discuss any more than that, but one of the documents that our city attorney will be sharing with the commission tonight, which is an attorney-client privileged document, relates to some of those issues, and we will be having additional discussions about them. I believe there's, as part of the bankruptcy process, there's typically a window in which people can file claims and make assertions, and then there's another period after that, and I believe that period is a couple of months, where you can file objections. And then there's a series of hearings, and the court makes a final determination. We're in that process. I don't think that final determination will be until August. So we're engaged, we're looking at that, but I do think there are going to be some limits for us, because taking the buildings down, for example, wouldn't be a land use process, so we don't have the same tools. But if there's going to be some redevelopment there, we do have quite a few tools. I've talked about some of them in the newspaper and everybody knows kind of what those tools are. So we're, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We're glad the public is paying attention to the same thing.
We do issue demolition permits, though, right?
We do issue demolition permits, yes. To qualified applicants. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Wanted to dot the agenda. Is there anything, either in the order or anything that someone wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I wish to remove number 8B from the consent agenda.
For a discussion after we, before we do it. 8B, okay? This is a collective bargaining agreement. All right? With that, we'll go ahead on the agenda. We've got amendments to the intergovernmental agreement for the library district of Clackamas County, and our library director, Maureen Cole, I believe is going to be the staff person that talks about it.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, I have before you two amendments to the original master IGA that was, that the rest of the cities in the county entered into upon the development of the library district. And the City of Damascus and the portion of Tuolotin that are in, that's in Clackamas County, the voters in those areas have voted to join the library district. And so now we have to make that official by amending the IGA to include them. By the way, this has absolutely no financial impact on Oregon City Library, just so you know right up front.
Thank you. I was going to ask that.
Yeah.
Well, that means we don't get any of their money, too.
That's right. That's right. So let's see, there's two amendments. They're separate because the City of Tuolotin is under a different arrangement. What is typical is that there's just a certain number of library cities within the district, and if you're in an unincorporated area or not right in that city, you're kind of assigned to an area, and the tax goes to that city. And so in Damascus, all of the tax raised, all the income raised from Damascus will go to Happy Valley or something that's closest, something like that. I'm sorry, I only pay attention to Oregon City. I'm really paying attention to Oregon City these days.
There you go.
Yeah. But in Tuolotin, the city council of Tuolotin proposed, and it was accepted by the library district advisory board, that half of the income go to their library. And we felt this was in the best interest of the people who live in that portion of Tuolotin, so we agreed to that. So that's why there's two separate amendments. The amendment for Tuolotin requires approval of all the library cities, and the amendment for Damascus, I think it's two-thirds. And I recommend approval of both amendments.
I'm a little bit snooty about this, because they opted not to, I believe Damascus did it not, two entities opted not to go into this library district at the beginning. And then after they saw it passed by so much, and there were all kinds of monies involved, they decided they'd opt into it.
Yep.
Of course, I'm not going to block it, but they should have been given a harder time about it, because they made the decision at the beginning they weren't going to participate. But-
We gave them a hard time at the-
Good.
Good.
I promise you.
Good.
Now, I presume this amendment then requires a formal motion and approval by us?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the amendments to the intergovernmental agreement for the library district of Clackamas County.
Second.
This is the one dealing with Tuolotin at first.
Yes.
Oh, we're doing separately?
Yeah, doing separately.
We're doing separately?
Good.
Tuolotin first.
Any discussion? We had the motion made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Mum. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
A reluctant aye. The Second Amendment now deals with, I believe, the one dealing with the library district of Clackamas County and-
Damascus.
Go ahead.
Damascus.
Damascus.
Yeah.
It's the same situation with this one. They opted not to, initially, to be a district.
Yeah, right.
I move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Again, a reluctant aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Let him know we're reluctant to-
Okay.
Well, at least that I was. Anyway, next item, and I think that was our only business that required any motions in terms of the general business. Nancy Crushour has a report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, you have your local agency agreement, number 27436, which is between the Oregon Department of Transportation and the City of Oregon City to construct the project on Main Street between Fifth and Tenth Street. That project replaces deteriorated sidewalks, installs new street lighting on Main Street between Fifth and Tenth. It also improves the sidewalks and streetlights and streetscape on Seventh Street between Arch Bridge and the elevator. And it also creates a very much enhanced pedestrian crossing intersection at the base of the elevator to get onto Seventh Street. And currently, the cost estimate is approximately $2.2 million, of which 1.9, well, close to $2 million is from the state and from federal funding. This local agreement establishes the terms and responsibilities for both ODOT and the City of Oregon City for the funding of the project, the construction, and then the maintenance of various portions of the project. And I'm asking you to adopt this local agency agreement so we can move forward with that project.
Just wondering if you could take a moment. I mean, we have several things we're talking about on Main Street, and this covers exactly, we've indicated which ones it covers. Can you just go through the ones it doesn't cover, and that will be seen at a later date?
And actually, you've already entered into those agreements. The first agreement that you entered into was for the enhanced pedestrian bicycle crossing at Tenth and Main. That'll be an elevated intersection that will also include some storm drainage improvements, streetscape and street lighting on Tenth Street between, primarily between Main Street and McLaughlin Boulevard, trying not to get too close to the railroad, because it would very much complicated the project, and we wouldn't have been able to succeed in getting this part done. The second agreement you entered into with ODOT, those were from the state's bicycle pedestrian funds. They have a grant program for that. The second agreement you entered into was for the short-term improvements from the circulation study, and those are the near-term improvements, and that is to return Main Street to a two-way street, and also to replace signage and things of that nature.
And then this is the final agreement. These are the three. There are no more, as I understand it correctly.
At this time.
Okay. Okay. Do I, we need a motion on this, I believe?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Roth. Is there any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. Shall we take the consent agenda without item B first, and then we'll come to item B? Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda with B excluded?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Okay, B, collective bargaining agreement between the City of Oregon City and the Oregon Employees Local 532. Commissioner Nacita?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to take this off the consent agenda, because I wanted a comment on it. I'll certainly vote for it, obviously. But I do want to express a concern, because I've expressed a concern, and the culture does not seem to have changed. I still have a concern about our operations as a city, about leaving the City Commission as the very last step in the process, rather than consulting with the commission in advance before things like labor negotiations are entered into. I believe that, particularly in things like collective bargaining and labor negotiations, the City Commission, being the governing body, should have a meeting with staff prior to any contact with an employees' union, and it hasn't happened since I've been on the commission. In fact, as folks may recall, before we entered into our agreement with the police union, that deal was settled before any initial consultation was done with the City Commission. I'm happy with all of these agreements. I'm not happy with the fact that on this and other matters, the City Commission continues to be consulted, not at the beginning of the process, but rather well into the process or at the end of the process. I'm sorry the culture's not changed. Cultures may be difficult to change. I'm, you know, if adopting a written policy has to be resorted to at some point, I may propose such, but I'd just like to express my concern about that.
Can we give Mr. Rothler a chance to respond?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioners, I believe you recall that I did brief the commission in executive session prior to actually sitting down, well, for negotiations. We were approached by AFSCME in December with their request to roll over the contract, and the city thought it was a good idea. And I briefed the commission in executive session and expressed what the city bargaining terms would be, or recommended, and I got consensus from the commission at that time. And I got consensus from the commission at that time. And we went forward and met in one day and came to an agreement. So there was no, I don't believe there was any malice or forethought on the city's part or nor on my part, as far as trying to negotiate the contract in good faith for the best of the city.
And as my recollection, we did not have an executive session on the police contract, I presume, because there were perhaps no issues?
There was no issues, and it settled before we could even go to executive session. It settled in one day, much to everybody's surprise, and it turned out very favorably. But that was unusual, and that's certainly not the norm.
I think the, I mean, I've said this before. I think what you were recommending at one point was that members of the commissions sit in the bargaining discussions. I think you're imposing politics into a negotiation between labor and management. I really think that's a mistake.
Well, I'm not raising that issue tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, that's when you, but you referred to your concern earlier, and those concerns that you expressed earlier were exactly directed to that. So I'm just revisiting the history.
I know, you are.
Okay.
You're regurgitating the history. I mean, I didn't raise that issue tonight.
Okay.
I mean, and you raised that issue when I raised it. I don't know why you're raising it tonight.
Well, you referred to the history. That was part of the history.
No, I'm raising my concern about when the negotiations begin.
You indicated your support. You want to make a motion?
I will move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Oregon City and Oregon City Employees Local 350-2, Council 75, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, two-year contract extension for the period of July 1st, 2011 to June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Have the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes. And with that, let me come back here and just get out of this and back into here. With that, we've ready for communications from the city manager to begin with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind everybody that we have the Jug Handle Groundbreaking tomorrow at 12:30, I believe it's 12:30, at Home Depot. It's your call if you want to wear your methane gas mask. Just kidding. Also, met with Congressman Kurt Schrader late last week to ask for his support on our efforts to restore the Erma Tinger House. And I thought the discussion, though brief, was very positive, and I'm looking forward to further discussions with he and his staff, is actually working with our staff right now on that. Also, tomorrow morning, I'm going to meet with a member of Senator Rodden Wyden's staff, unless he's watching this TV streaming over the web, he won't know, but I'm going to ask him about the Erma Tinger tomorrow as well. And I really think that the story behind that house, which I don't know as well as I'd like, actually, when I'm having these conversations, maybe Commissioner Smith can help brief me on that or give me a resource where I could find out a little more information. But I think it's a really interesting story, and I think it's a compelling story. And I think there are people in the community that can tell it more effectively than I. But I think the story is compelling on its own, and I find that we're getting a pretty good reception so far. It also is helpful, these folks are so used to people bringing them a problem with not even a centilla of a solution. It's helpful that we have done our best to manage this resource. We haven't got it done. I mean, we look at it, it's closed. That makes the argument compelling, that now's the time, if there ever has been one, for us to do something major and leverage our partnerships with these other intergovernmental agencies to restore the property. But it also is, I'm using, I think, somewhat effectively, the commitment that the Budget Committee made to earmark the $100,000 in the budget for that, because that is something the city's never done before. It's, I can tell you, in this economy, that is extremely rare. And when I describe what the commitment has been from this council and the commitment of this $100,000, I get eyebrows on both sides raising, saying, "Really?" And then I've got their attention, and that really gives us a chance to have that discussion. So we're going to be trying to call sort of, I'm calling it the "Ermy Summit," just because, I don't know what else to call it. But we're going to try to assemble a larger group of people to meet that will include these federal elected officials, and we're trying to get folks there from the state, and we're going to be trying to talk to the mayor of Portland, his office. Before we do that, we want to try to lay as much groundwork as we can as staff, because there are technical issues around the House, and Scott's department has been working on these engineering studies. We're a little nervous about spending a whole lot of money on the soils testing, because it is expensive, unreasonably, I think, expensive. And so we're a little nervous about spending too much money on that when we're not sure what the solution is. I think Scott will be bringing a report to you pretty soon on that. But that could be affected in a major way by our discussions with National Park Service and then this broader group of individuals who might be willing to help. So anyway, that's the latest on the Erma Tinger House, and that's all I have unless somebody on the staff has something. Oh, and then Ed's got the memo that will preclude your executive session tonight. It's attorney-client privilege, so please read it.
Actually, Mr. Frasier, I'd like to make a request to the commission and to the city attorney. This meeting has gone a lot quicker than I thought it was going to take. I thought we were going to be out here like nine or 10. I was wondering if we have enough time to briefly meet an executive session on this matter?
It'll probably only take about five minutes. You haven't read the memo yet, and...
But there's just some other discussions I want to bring up.
Well, it's up to the rest of the commission.
Do you want mine?
No, no problem.
And that's your report, then?
Yes.
And no other staff has reported, I take it? I'll comment briefly. The IMPACT did not hold a meeting. There was actually a different meeting that was being held, which I was thinking of going to. But then I realized that the Beaver Creek Hamlet holds its meetings on the fourth Wednesday, when IMPACT usually occurs. And I had mentioned that, and I got commission approval, to speak to the Beaver Creek Hamlet about the possibility of having representatives of this commission and representatives of the Board of the Beaver Creek Hamlet get together and talk about perhaps the long-term future of the urban reserve that exists between the City of Oregon City and Beaver Creek. Annexation discussions and concept plans for the area around Beaver Creek have caused tensions between some members of Beaver Creek Hamlet and the city. And I don't think this is necessary. I think we can do some things there that will, when that area comes into the city, and that may not be for 40 or 50 years, but the visions of the city and Beaver Creek Hamlet can both be taken into account. I've asked Commissioner Nocita to be with me, at least in some of those initial discussions. And the chair of the Board, who also is actually the chair of the County's Planning Commission, Norm Andreen, has indicated that he would like to meet with us, and one of his old Board members, Mrs. Stein, is interested as well. I think they'll indicate when the time, you know, when they're going to have the time to do it. It was a little bit fortuitous I went to that meeting, because they were going to report on the Jug Handle project. And they thought that, since I was there, that I might do so, and I did. I hadn't reported earlier to the City of Mulhalla about the Jug Handle project. The basic concern was, how many people are we going to get out there during that four-day closure to direct people through the main city of Oregon City down to the McLaughlin Boulevard to get them out of this area? I think we should make a recommendation personally, that all employees in the Portland, Washington, Clackamas area, all of the employers ought to declare a Friday and Monday holiday on both sides of the weekend, so our people can stay at home, and we won't have a big traffic jam.
Well, actually, I have another suggestion. Maybe just bring them to Oregon City and have them get lost on Main Street and spend lots of hours down there.
Well, I think that's going to happen, I think that's going to happen in any case, actually. They're going to get stuck on Main Street.
Spend lots of money.
So got to get a lot, get a lot of street vendors out there at that particular time, I guess. Anyway, that's the only thing I have to report that is really commission-related. Any other reports? Commissioner Nocita?
First thing I wanted to post to the city manager, what's on tap for our work session next week?
Land use in Erma Tinger and White Oaks.
Next thing I wanted to chat about was Monday's tour of Blue Heron. I brought with me tonight my little cartridge with all my photos, but I was too busy at night to, after the Urban Renewal Commission, to show them. But if people are interested, I'd be happy to put my 40 shots on the screen.
The city, on our website, we do have a photo gallery. And if you're willing to share those with us, just let us, you know, send them our way, and we'll put them on the photo gallery, and everyone can see them then if you'd like.
Okay, that's an idea. I did want to make another mention. I wanted to thank the city manager. I, as part of Mayor Neely's appointment of me to the Willamette Falls National Heritage Area Coalition, I obtained the determination of eligibility for the Willamette Falls Industrial Area, which is a determination that was made by PGE during their licensing process as part of a requirement for their application for their FERC license renewal. They had a consultant make a determination on whether these properties are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And the determination was, yes, they are. The city's now placed that report up on our city website. So anybody interested in studying that, it's a really interesting read. It's a really, really interesting read. Since they're in the audience tonight, I'd like to thank Lloyd Purdy and Terry Powers. I had a chance to have coffee with them a couple, about a week and a half ago, to share my concerns regarding why I did not vote to approve the EID district regarding public bodies, public access, notice, et cetera, et cetera, all of which are still concerns of mine. And, but I think we came to an understanding about where each of us was coming from on this matter, and I will be continuing to raise that issue in the future. So those are...
Commissioner Smith?
Wanted to make a couple announcements, but first, Historic Preservation Month. The presentations this evening were great, and I wish Claire would have been recognized a lot sooner. It's amazing, I, well, I'll give you an example. On the week right before the holidays, on a fire truck going around Oregon City collecting canned food, I was riding with members of the fire department that, you know, obviously the fire district exceeds our city limits. So we had firefighters in that truck that really didn't know Oregon City very well, in terms of the side streets and going through the neighborhoods. And we took that road into Amesworth Estates, and they saw that house. And, you know, you don't expect that house when you're driving through that neighborhood up there, because the neighborhood kind of grew around it, and they could not believe it. It was like, what is that? And I don't go through there that much either. And every time I do, and you just look at the house, it's unbelievable. And I remember what the house looked like when Claire bought it and their family. It was incredible, the work that was done to save that house. And I think about just Oregon City in general over the last 20 years of my life, and working at the Carnegie Center when it looked like, it didn't look good.
It's great for a haunted house.
And talking to, you know, city, my boss at the city at that time, and thinking, we were kind of laughing, joking about what would it be like if this building looked the way it was when it was built? And then looking across the street at the fire station and looking at so many of these buildings in Oregon City that now are restored. And we've got a lot more work to do, Ruth, but we're going to do it. And I don't know if I will be on the city commission by the time we deal with the Erma Tinger House, but that's something I'm not going to give up, and I'm going to work on that until I die or until the house gets fixed, whichever comes first, because it's that important. This, you know, we've all said it, we live here, we love this place, it's an amazing place. And when you, you can't describe how amazing this place is. And it's so fun, I enjoyed seeing David get, you know, this close to the falls and see that reaction. It changes your perspective on what this city is. And I knew that, I kind of joked in the email to David, that I kind of knew he was now an Oregon City resident when he started using the word "ermy." It's something, Susan John called it the "ermi." And I've called it that, you know, I've called a lot of different pronunciations of the name, "erma tinger," "erma manager," et cetera. But it cracked me up when he was talking about the "ermy summit," because I knew that he was now an Oregon City resident, even though he's not. Are you living in the city? No, but he's an honorary. We should like, you know, maybe give him like honorary.
I know you ought to do. We should force him to stay in the erma tinger.
Yeah, I don't know about that. First floor, maybe. No, that wouldn't be, I don't know. On the porch. So anyway, and I just want to also thank, you know, I've worked really hard, the Hardings have worked really hard on the Erma Tinger House, and it hasn't really been until recently, I think, that we all have gotten on the same page. And I really, really appreciate the staff's work in the last year, even couple of years, and this commission's work. You know, the mayor that made the motion to budget $100,000, and it was this entire commission that supported that. And that's really the first time I've seen that level of commitment and that determination to fix this. And that's, because it's important, saving this history is important. And I so agree with what Dan Fowler was saying. When I talked to my students at Oregon City about the history of this town and talking about the mill closure, you know, people are like, some, you know, some people are like, "Well, so what?" And you don't understand the importance of that place, if you can say that. It's not just a place to work. It's not, it's why this city's here. It's why this state's here. This is a mill town without a mill. And so it's very important that it keeps some of that identity when it changes. It's crucial. And I'm glad to hear that people are really echoing that, because it's so important. That's our, that's our history. Okay, enough on that. I've been exhausted. Two weeks is a huge event in Oregon City. May 20th through the 22nd is the Pioneer Family Festival at Clackbit Park, which I have coordinated for, well, since 1998. It originally was an event that I created for Dornbacher Children's Hospital for two years in 1998, 99, and then it kind of moved into Optimus Club. It's a fundraiser for the Optimus Club, which puts money back into school programs and youth programs throughout the state. It's a fundraiser for the Optimist Club, which puts money back into school programs and youth programs throughout the city, including the summer reading program at the library and a lot of other programs. So that's what the festival does. The 21st of May is the Teddy Bear Parade on Main Street for the 14th year. And Saturday, the 21st, also after the parade, skateboard competition at the skate park. And on Sunday, BMX competition, so I'll talk more about that next week. But I wanted to let everyone know about that. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I wanted to make a quick comment, because you did bring up the restoration of the Carnegie Center. It was actually urban renewal monies that did that. It had the support of three, at that time, the Urban Renewal Commission was a city commission, and Mayor John Williams and Commissioner Jack Lynch and myself voted to support that particular project, and it was well done. And I think the Urban Renewal Commission can make commitments to guarantee that we have a great restoration of the Erma Tinger as well.
Well, I think that ends it, except we're going to, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and turn it into executive session, but we will not be coming back to regular meetings.
I'll give you the numbers.
He's going to give me the numbers.
This is ORS, 192662E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, and 192662H, to consult with council to deal with legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation to be filed. I will be giving you a confidential lawyer-client, which I hope you will keep to yourselves. Same thing about the usual, in these discussions, you don't discuss it with your partner, your spouse, anybody else, your friends. This is all between us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?